Aunt Patty's on the square. Park County's oldest antique mall with 22 years on the southeast corner of the square. We have 25 dealers who take great pride in stocking and maintaining their booths. In 7,500 square feet, you can find almost everything from the smallest penknife to great jewelry, vintage coins, sports cards, dishes like Grandma had, all the way to a large piece of furniture. We're open seven days a week. Our hours are Monday through Saturday, 10 to 5, and Sunday noon to 5.
Maybe if it's something our officers knew.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, sir.
We weren't here last week, so I guess the minutes is on Bruce and I.
Yep, we'll do that.
All right, I'll call a meeting to order. We'll start off with the minutes from the 8:15 meeting, and I was not present for that meeting, so is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for 8:15.
Can I second that?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And we have payroll in the amount of $185,983.52.
Which is normal.
Yep. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve payroll from the amount of $185,983.52.
Can I second that?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then we just need to acknowledge receipt of payroll claims account. Payable report.
And I make a motion, we acknowledge receipt of payroll claims in the amount of $87,113.87.
Can I second that?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then we have claims in the $609,598.53.
There's been a lot of it from the county highway.
Yep. Motion to approve claim?
I make a motion, we approve claim, excuse me, of $609,598.53.
Can I second that?
Move the second to approve claim, $609,598.53, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is the six, sorry. No, this is the seven. It's a six.
Six.
Okay. Again, this says money to six, but it's two to the six. Still the six, right? Okay. Do you miss Chris?
This is a couple of things. The first is we're doing the hazard mitigation planning, planning team to do that grant, to write that report. And I can't remember if I'd asked you before, but I'd like someone from the commissioners to be on that. We're meeting on the 13th, Tuesday, at 7:30. There'll be four meetings, each about an hour long, spread over the next 12 months, and you'd have to come and...
What date?
The 13th, which is Tuesday.
Okay. 7:30, you guys, either you guys want to be in on that?
That's the next Tuesday?
That's the next Tuesday, yes.
We can do that.
That's at night, 7:30 at night. There's going to be reps from each one of the towns there as well.
So it's up to you?
I can do it, if it works with you guys.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
I'll send you some information on it. It'll be an hour, and it'll be pretty easy.
Why don't you send it if you don't mind all three of us?
Sure.
Some means you can't go, maybe only the other of us can.
Okay. And then the papers that I handed out to you were bids for generators. So there was two different, this is all that one grant that we got to buy the highway department a generator, but there was enough money to buy two more. And I talked to you before about purchasing a generator for the fairgrounds, and so we finally got all the paperwork straightened out with that. And I'd like to go through with the bid that Jason Ali provided for the fairgrounds and to have him install a generator there. When I went through, that was the best deal for the county.
That's the $63.97?
No, the 98, 99.08.
No, there's two in there. There's two gens, one was a trailer, that's why if you look, get the summary sheet.
Right, in the trailer.
So this is a 24 kilowatt inline generator that would be attached to the exhibit hall, which we would use as a shelter. You know, in the past, we've used it for a couple of other things. And so what we'd do is ensure that we'd have power there to use that as a shelter and to support our emergency management during any type of power outage.
So that, this is the generator?
That's the generator.
So that's the price of the generator, de-install, everything be 93.08, okay. You guys have any questions? It's all grant money, and this is Chris's recommendation. So I make the motion, and then we go with Ali Electrical on the fairground generator install at $93,108.50.
Can I second that?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
The second one is the generator trailer. So this is, it depends on how you look at it, but it's an eight kilowatt generator that, it's on a trailer, it's a Generac, and basically we'd be able to use that to provide power to different areas in case of emergency. Again, this still fits within that grant, and the state has approved it. So I looked at several different generators from several different companies, they're all the same, and this company was selling it for the cheapest price, so that's why I went with them. And that's, I think, I can't remember which, that was the northern, yeah.
Any questions, one? Where do you store these, this?
So that will be stored down in Justin's pole barn. He doesn't know it yet, but I'm sure he'll allow it to happen.
Got any reliable guards out there? Are we okay with it out there?
It is, well, I guess that's outside.
It's outside the fence, yeah. We could find a spot, whether we put it, if we need to put it inside the fence or not, but, so yeah, so those are the two.
Okay, I make the motion, and then we go with the recommendation, emergency director for the northern, for the northern tool company for the eight kilowatt total generator at $11,249.
Can I second that?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So the next thing is going to be permission to go through with the EMPG salary grant. This is something we do every year, the state provides half the salaries for the emergency management agency, and it comes to about, comes to $18,450.
I'm really opposed to taking money from the state for this, I knew that, just so you know. I make the motion that we approve the grant request to seek funds for emergency management.
Can I second that?
All in favor, say aye. All right, anything difficult for us?
The next is a grant from, from the state, actually FEMA, but the state's running it, for, they call it an EMPG competitive grant. This is the same grant, we're buying the generators off of, same type of grant, but for this grant, we're going to use it to reinforce our first net communications capability and work on site trunking. So in the end, I'm going to buy some computers and some new radios to put into the dispatch so that we have more resilient communications, especially when we, we have a problem with the Bridgeton Tower on the state system. It's not that it's frequent, but a couple of times a year, it'll go into site trunking, which causes disruptions in how we are able to communicate in the county for emergency services, and these radios will help alleviate some of that problem. And then the second thing is to reinforce the first net, which is a cellular system that we have here in Indiana, to increase our ability to communicate to police and fire. And that's for 20K, that grant is...
And that's seeking your grant?
That's, yeah, that's applying for the grant.
Do I have any hesitation for that?
Nope.
Did I make the motion also that we approve the request for a grant by the Park County Emergency Management?
Can I second that?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, DAR has requested, and I don't know, and I meant to call our veteran service officer, and I failed to do that, completely slipped my mind. That's Veterans Day, and I don't know if they'd be in conflict, I wouldn't think they would be, it's just we're talking about putting luminaries there, it's not a ceremony or anything, so it looks like they're going to be from 6 to 9, so I am fine with that, if you guys are.
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
Is there a motion to approve it?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we approve to allow the DAR to use the courthouse lawn for the luminaries on Veterans Day, and I'll second that.
They also asked for permission to put a banner up from November 1st to November 15th, you want to include that in your motion to approve, for their request too?
Yes, I will, I don't think you see that in here, but yes, I'll approve that.
And your second, okay on that?
Second that.
Move the second to approve DAR to do the luminaries, as well as put a banner up on the courthouse lawn from November 1st to 16th, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the coverage fund revenue.
Okay, what this is, is just to show you, a couple months ago, I had presented to you the cover bridge certificate that all the commissioners signed, and I sent it into the state there in June, and then this is the amount of money that we got back for reimbursement. That's just to show you the revenues, of $51,800.
Okay. How much is that a bridge? Do you know Randy, what we get per bridge from the state? Eighteen hundred?
I think seventeen.
Seventeen, okay. Okay. You guys have any new business? Let me see if I do.
I got a little new business, so.
Let me check here real quick. Just so you know, they have begun to work on the projects that we were doing, they're working on the flush valves at the jail. There was an electrical issue there, which was not really an issue, it's just somebody had called and said there was a problem, or really there was, it was already figured out, it's just a matter of finding a hotline to come through that we didn't have to go through Justin's system. They get that worked out, Justin, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. And the other is, they are now at the courthouse beginning to put in the fire annunciation, so they're moving along on those projects. That's really all I got. All right, old business. Meeting of the 15th, it came up about our off-duty police officers serving as security for Union Hospital, and we had some questions on that, so Justin, why don't you come on up, we'll get you and get your other stuff done too, because I know you've got to get out of here early tonight, so let's make sure we get everything done that you have. But go ahead and tell us about that and what you need from us.
Basically, I think there are just a couple things we have to find out if, I guess the county's got to take pension out of it, or insurance, or whatever, so we can check into that.
When does that service start? When they want you to begin doing that?
Well, hey, they're ready now, so I mean, just...
There's no term on, it's 12 months, but there's no starting and ending date.
So we get that all aligned?
They're just trying to go 24/7, is what they're wanting, security-wise, so they farmed out the, us.
I have no problem going ahead and agreeing to it, letting Jim stop and sign it after Nick gets done checking, so we don't have to take...
Sir, you can go over and make carry, if you need one of us.
I can take care of tracking all that down, I'll probably have an answer here soon, but it's just as to the benefits that go with it.
So tell me what you guys need to be okay in order for me to sign that for you. I don't mind going and signing it, but I need to know what I'm approving. So how do you want it to be?
I guess what Bruce and I discussed at the meeting when you wasn't here, we're all for it, but we don't want to go backwards. If they're paying you, say, $38 an hour, I don't want to end up $42 an hour if you have to put in the retirement and all of that. I expect them guys, every dime of it you can give them guys for working, I expect, you know, if it's overtime, they deserve it, but for the same token, as long as we're not going backwards, I don't care. That was the whole nut in the shell, and then I don't want to be on the hook for...
So if we find out that, you guys think they're getting paid $38 an hour, but then it finds out that we have to take benefits out of that before we give you your pay, that's why you're saying you don't want to do that, you want to make sure we get enough paid?
I want to make sure the contract reads enough that we're not going backwards by any means, but...
Nick, you know what, he's bought everything he needs, and when you say it's okay, it'd be okay to meet those needs?
Yeah, I do. We can't really talk about a lot of the terms of the contract, because it has some confidentiality stuff to it, but I...
And I just threw that number out there.
Right, no, I understand.
I don't know if it's 28 or 38, I don't even remember, 48.
Right, so, but really the question is, how's it affect pension, how's it affect the health, the medical stuff?
Right.
Liability-wise, you know, I mean, there are employees so reliable for that.
So are you guys okay, either way, we just want to confirm how it is going to be?
Yes, and we're not going backwards, so, you know, the sheriff's department's not going...
Well, I guess, I guess, I guess I just need that defined, whether it means going backwards, because what you're telling me is that I could, I could go sign the contract without another meeting, but I don't know what, if you're going to meet this satisfaction that we're not going backwards, I don't know what that means, I guess.
So is, I guess what I'm hearing is that you're wanting to know whether or not those cost of benefits are going to be included for that number, if it's going to be a high...
Yes, for whatever number they're paying.
So we're getting everything from them?
No union's going to pass whatever dollars, okay?
Right.
So then, these guys just need to know, okay, if they're paying us, we can use it at a number of $50.
Yeah.
And the officer's going to get $50, and then we're on the hook, or we have to pay for the benefits, which council may or may not like.
Which is my belief on how it will work, but I just...
Or are the officers going to get $45, and then that $5 is used for benefits? I think that is kind of where...
That's exactly...
I mean, the guys need to know, because when they go there, they...
And the last thing I want is them not to get retirement paid if they got it coming to them, I want them to be there for them.
Well, what if the officers are still good, with getting that deducted out of whatever their set amount is?
Personally, yeah, and personally, I think they have to be, I don't think the council would approve us coming up with additional money to perform the service, so that's not going to happen, so that's why I want to make sure, I understand what you want.
About the money situation.
So, like you said, I think as long as everybody understands that you're getting that 50 bucks an hour, whatever that number is, but the deductions are going to come out of that pay, you get what's left over, you're not getting the 50 bucks an hour in your pocket.
Which is how that's going to have to function.
Have to function that way, yeah.
Now, I'll check with everybody, but I'm assuming that...
Does that mean everything's going to go through payroll?
My understanding...
You're just going to get, you're just going to get hours from them.
Right, but I just want to make...
Everything we've done previously has been 1099. This is coming through the county, so it's going to be, it's just a service that the county's contracting for.
We're basically hiring these guys overtime, and we're paying them overtime, we're just getting, we're just getting the money from someone else to pay for that.
I know Clinton, Clinton, I think, Vermillion County maybe gets it with every payday, but they do a separate check.
Okay.
And I think Clinton gets a check weekly, so it's out of the pay cycle.
Okay.
So I guess that's just something that...
Do you have a preference how you want that set up?
Do you want a separate check within the pay cycle, or do you want all of it in the pay cycle? You want to try to keep...
I'd have to think about that.
Okay, let us know, let Nick know.
Because if it all goes through the payroll system, then your benefits and your insurance and everything comes out. If there's a contract...
No, it's not a contract, it's going through payroll, they are just paying us to provide that service.
And all of their benefits are all mathly set up to all, to be out.
I guess what I'm getting at is, do you want it in a reimbursement situation, or do you want the check ahead of time? That's what Dan's asking, do you want paid ahead of time, before payroll cycle comes along, or do you want to...
Yeah, I want the Union Hospital to pay us ahead of time.
Ahead of, that's what I'm getting at, yeah, that's all I need to know. Okay. And how much, and how much lead do you need on that?
I don't remember what you said.
Long you have it ahead of time, is that sufficient, or do you need, you need to pay period ahead of time, what do you need?
I like to have the money in at least a week ahead of time.
So we have to, we have to bill after the services, and then they reimburse.
So it's going to be reimbursed, so you're not going to get that then anyway?
You're not going to get it ahead of time.
Okay.
You've got to bill them.
Okay.
And that's going to have to be paid out of, I'm going to set up a separate line and pay it all the way out of a separate line.
That's how Vermillion County...
Okay.
And we'll be paid with the other ones if you have a separate line.
So that, that takes care of that question then, about ahead of time?
Yes.
We get reimbursed for it, so we have to come up with the money anyway, we just pay it, so I don't know if I couldn't pay the regular pay cycle with ours, but I don't care how you do, I mean, that's your business, whatever you do on that.
So the way you have to view it is, the county has a contract with Union Hospital to provide a service. The county's employees are still the county's employees.
Yes, in all respects.
Right.
Yes, insurance, everything.
Everything, yeah.
Yep. And I'm okay with that, we just need to make sure we understand that's what it is. So make, take care of your concerns on that.
I think we had, I think we had two concerns, one was how the pay was going to work and all that, the other was liability.
Yeah.
Because we were just, that's outside of our county, that's in Vermont County, so if the guys got into a fight, or if they...
It's our baby, yeah, they're our employees, we're just contracting with them to provide services.
We're okay with accepting the liability of...
It'd be no different than if they were backing up a call over there and something...
I was going to say, exactly the same thing, it's the same as if we're on a dis-iss call someplace.
And it took me a month or two on the benefits part, but yeah, it's going to have to operate that way, because they're operating as your employee.
I agree, I agree.
You're going to have to do it that way.
The main thing is, is like I say, we don't go backwards, and we have to go ask council for more money.
Right.
It has to, it has to be a profit and operate on its own, or we can't do it.
So you guys would just have to be okay with whatever that dollar amount is, once the benefits come through.
You're okay with that then, we'll move on. Okay.
No issue with driving the car the quarter mile outside the county, or whatever it is, to get to the hospital?
We don't have any restrictions on that, do we?
No.
I mean, if they're going somewhere...
I thought that was one of the questions when I wasn't here, or something, but maybe not.
The only time that's ever come up in my years is with the highway department, we had a guy in the highway department years ago that would take his, if he was on call, he would take the truck everywhere, wherever he went, he'd take his wife with him, and people would see that, and it got to be a problem, they're not going to be a problem with this, your own duty, go and perform a service that we've contracted to do.
They're working.
Yes.
Yeah, they're working, so.
So it won't be a problem.
The only way not to take the benefits out would be if they were 1099, and you directly.
Yeah.
And then that kind of raises all another bunch of issues for you guys as officers.
And it'd be a nightmare for both of us.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Okay, what else you got?
60 current inmates, five of them are DOC, generate $12,445 last month for DOC, tally for the year is $112,200.
How's that compared to other years, you know?
Well, it's higher than last year, but I think the only other year that's, well, you're going back to, I think, 2014 was the only other time that we were lower than that, so the other years were pretty COVID, I guess, but I think the highest year we had was 303,000, there was two or three of those years, so...
I was thinking there was a quarter million or so there of the years, so...
And COVID hit, yeah, and we just had a rash of COVID come through with them inmates and employees, so...
Did you really?
So, yeah, it's...
Before we go any farther, we need to back up and make a motion and allow you to sign that after Nick checks.
Okay, I'm okay with that, so let's, let's agree to the contract first, so is that your motion doing?
Yeah, I make a motion, we agreed to the contract as presented by the sheriff, other than if Nick finds something out that we had previously discussed and would not agree to.
Or second?
And I allow Jim to sign it.
I'll second that.
Okay, so it's been moved to second and to approve the contract, and also to authorize me to sign the contract once Nick has given it his approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right.
And then we had tender rest over the weekend, which isn't anything too out of the normal, I guess, but we did have a homicide Friday, and then, or, yeah, Friday, and then I think it was Saturday, we had a fatal accident, so...
Sunday.
Sunday, okay.
So the one with the gunshot, right?
Yeah.
Spousal dispute, domestic dispute?
Yeah, it sounds like, domestic, or husband-wife, so... We had some people doing community service, and then used an outside worker, but we ended up repainting all of our interior and exterior doors, admin walls, lobby, restroom, the overhead Sally Port doors, our dog kennel, and we have like a fencing, so we had a lot redone, basically free of charge except for us buying the paint. And then there were several steel doors for like pipe chases, and then a couple exterior doors where they rusted, started eating them after 25 years, but we had somebody else do repairs on that in exchange for community service time, otherwise it cost a ton to replace those, so...
That's great use of it.
And then we tested an inmate shower area with like some kind of, it wasn't epoxy, but it's something similar to epoxy, trying to instead of repainting everything every couple of years in the showers and the bathrooms, trying to coat it with this gritty stuff, so we're seeing how it works, we did that ourselves too, so if it holds up, we'll probably redo the whole inmate area with that and the shower area, so trying to, trying to keep the upgrades going on it.
Are the flush valves operational yet?
I don't know if they're operational yet or not, they're definitely moving through them now, it seemed like a little slow start, but, and then Matt did come out today, so he was there for a little bit, so...
He was at the courthouse today too, and the issue they were talking about electrical was, they thought they were going to have to tap into a line here, and they thought that might interfere with the door operations, but Matt said that was something the guy was always talking about when he was carrying on about, they just had to find another power source to hook into, and they did, and so...
That's all I've got, so...
Okay. Staffing-wise, how are you?
One jail officer short, and one deputy...
You're going to be able to...
Soon to be short, one deputy, so...
Yeah, you're going to be able to have enough for festival without putting everybody...
Yeah, I think last year during festival, I think we were three down, I guess Chris McCann's out till at least, I don't remember, December or February, but I think last year we were three short during festival, we made it worse, so, yeah, one guy's leaving, I think the 25th of this month, so...
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, thanks, sir. All right, Purdue postage lease agreement.
You actually took care of this, all we just need to do is officially make a motion, no, we did not do it that day, because I needed to call Missy and find out what's going on, because it's 63 months, so we didn't know if we wanted to go out 63 months, we didn't know if the council would go for that.
Yeah.
But when I talked to Missy, it was $61 if we did 63 months, if we did a 12-month, it went up to $131.
Twice that, yeah.
We were double, so it was like...
No brainer, we could do that one.
So that, you went ahead and signed it, but we never officially approved this.
Is that your motion?
So I make a motion, we approve the Purdue postage lease out, the extension office.
And I second that.
All in favor, say aye. And I did sign it, so it's been down.
Yep.
All right, any other old business for you guys? Check again, make sure I got nothing listed there. We did take delivery of the new mowers, and Don's pleased with how it works, so we should be in good shape now for several more winters yet with the old John Deere, I think, so should be, should be good to go. Department listing, so...
Well, we've done Justin, so...
Yes, it looks like Randy must be it then.
Yep.
Throw it up, Randy. Randy's been put in a most difficult position, and I'm as responsible for that as anybody else, but let's wait until Nick gets back here in a minute, I got to ask him a question[1797.72] Randy's been put in a most difficult position, and I'm as responsible for that as anybody else, but let's wait until Nick gets back here. In a minute, I gotta ask him a question on this. We talked about Bloomingdale Road, and uh, I know Randy went through a different uh, different vendor to buy the pug mix. And uh, pug mix has not worked out well in some spots. Some, some places on that road is fine. So I don't know how that occurs, but they had to be back out sanding that road, keep to, take care of the oil that's oozing out of it, and uh, uh, so I went to talk to Randy, but he was out and uh, talked to Janie for a while about that. It's a, it's a, oh, I don't know what the matter is, uh, that, how you wanna describe it. These things happened to us, it happened last uh, was it last year or year before?
About three years.
Yeah, and we fought that, we, I say we, Randy fought that, and fought that, and fought that all summer long, putting sand on it, stone on it, sand on it. These things happened to little counties like us, and I talked to a lot of other commissioners. It happens to little counties like us because we allow it to happen to us, because we know everything about it. Randy's a nice guy. Uh, the other company with the uh, the guy in charge, uh, the salesman, uh, friend of all of us. So you don't wanna get obnoxious with them, but at the same time, you're buying crap, so we, we bought this material, Randy, Randy bought it from this other company. Saved fifty thousand bucks. I understand that's a, it's an important thing. And I understand that uh, they made an offer to return some of the money. We haven't talked about how much he was talking about giving us back on that.
I didn't bring that up yet.
But here's, here's what this, philosophically, this is what that comes down to me. That's why I, I am always resistant to take any money back. Because now we have just bought and paid for crappy material. Um, so he could have contracted us with anything and had, had no good material, had no intention of making good material. Sold us this junk at the good material price. We paid the good material price. We complained about it, so we give back the money. He still ended up selling us this crap that we didn't wanna buy. So have we been tricked into buying bad stuff? Is it a genuine mistake, which I understand how those things happen to? I don't know where we are with that, but I was hot enough the other day when I was talking with Janie, when I first went in after I got off that road again, and it'd been sanded, there were still spots where it's breaking apart, it, it's peeling up, the, the smooth surface on top of it.
There's three areas peeling up, and there's, it's not peeling up real bad.
Okay. So, you know, I, I've never in, in the, in the look to find somebody to beat up on, and I hate to have to even deal with this stuff. But I'm also tired of eating it, of having, having this happen to us all the time. So what do, what do you wanna do with it, Randy? What, how do you wanna solve the problem? Those spots on that road are awful, so to me, we spent good money, you spent good time. You get beaten up by the public because they think the highway department did a crappy job, and I know that, because I've gotten the calls, and they blame the highway department. It's not in any way, shape, or form the highway department's responsibility or fault. They put down the mural, the, the material that they purchased in good faith, that was gonna be good material. It's not. And there's not a way in the world to know that it's bad material, put it down. Randy corrected them once when they were making it, that they had the wrong stuff in it, not, not enough. I don't remember what that deal was, either not too much oil, not enough oil, or wrong stone.
Anti-stripp, anti.
Okay, and, and so he caught, he caught that, and they corrected that. So I, I'm just, I'm just at a, at a loss. I mean, I just want, we've spent all this time, and the highway department's taking a beating on this, it's not their fault in any way, shape, or form. I think just offering to give us a few dollars back off of what we purchased, which results in us just paying, paying good money for crap. I don't know what the answer is. What are our options on that?
Tell them to fix it.
Tell them to come in and pay for it and fix it, those spots? Randy, what you thought?
That's what makes it whole.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I see it too. I agree with that. What do you think?
Um, well, yeah, I mean, they'd have to dig them spots out and replace it with.
Be wedging it in, but they can't take all the bad stuff out.
Material that uh, you know, has the right amount of oil in it. But as far as that money coming back to us, that's not for this reason.
Oh, it's not?
No.
Oh, JD thought it was, that's what it was for.
The uh, low oil we done with, with the anti-stripp not right in it, is it was just more or less gravel. Oil was taken to it. But we did haul it over to our pit, and then we hauled it back. And they ran it back through the pudd mill. So with the right amount of oil.
Okay.
And, and, and I, and I strip. So that's what that is for.
Okay.
As I raise hell with it.
She said you did it. She hadn't seen you that angry with someone before, so. So is that paying you back for your time and money spent hauling it back and forth?
That, and paying us back for that low oil.
Okay. What do you wanna do on the other parts that are still bad? You, you want Nick to write them a letter and tell them they, they need to redo that?
I need to see that contract, whoever that contract goes with to, to know what our rights are in it, but generally, you know, that's what makes it whole, barring there being language in there, stops that, so.
Are you aware of anything? You says they're not liable for anything?
No, no, I, because I didn't read the contract that much.
We would neither. It wouldn't expect that to come up. Do you have the contracts?
Uh, we should have. If not, Laura does.
Okay.
I generally, once you've approved them and signed them, she keeps them, so I don't generally keep them.
Can we get a copy of those in?
I mean, sometimes I have them, sometimes Ken, Ken Highway has them.
We, we generally try and make copies of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
We, we keep a copy.
Let's get those, Nick, see. I'm not in a rush, other, other than I want the road fixed. Road, it's, it's a, it's mess. It's gonna be messy during bridge festival. It's gonna reflect badly on you guys again.
Well, we get a hot day again, which I imagine we will.
Yeah.
Which road they talking?
Bloomingdale Road. I'll go out there with a chipper and just use two or three feet, put, put some, a strip down on it, and then get the roller out there and roll it in.
Okay.
But there's no use to now, just, it's not sticky in it.
Yeah, yeah.
How, how much of it would you save? How many feet should come up and go back then?
Well, I'd have to measure it.
I mean, quarter mile, mile, two mile?
I would say between a half and three quarters, probably.
What's the whole, whole run there that you did, beat over, three miles?
I think it is.
Yeah.
So fifteen, twenty percent?
Um, golf course road don't look too bad.
So I thought too. So was it just?
That there's more damage on the road from the public. Tractors turning around on it.
Yeah.
One spun around the hill there, on top of the hill there, just north of Egg Farm Road.
Yeah.
And the new house being built there, that's tore up in front of it.
Is it normal for it to be that soft though?
Yeah, it generally is, yes. Especially when it's hot.
Well, when.
We put it down fairly thick too, I mean, two and a half inches, so.
While we're on that, I just wanted to make sure that you understood, because Janie thought that you, you were of the feeling that we didn't want you running the paper, ever. And I told her that's just.
That's another thing. You, all three of you commissioners, John Pratt and Roy Reichman, we just here at the, for the um, county, what do we call that, highway meeting. And you said that you didn't want me to be running the equipment.
I, I don't know is, it may have come across that way, but we had been talking about that. I think what our intention was, we felt like you needed to get a guy or two trained in case something happened. There needs to be somebody else. If you're sick and in the hospital, that needs to know how to do it.
If you remember right, you said I was gonna be busy enough running around after the con, uh, contract crews.
Right, and what we said, at least what we intended, what I said, because there's no one I would rather have run that paper than you, and I've told you that before, because you're the only one with the experience to do it, right to me. If that's what you heard, what we mean is, we don't want you having to do that all the time, because you have other things to do. That's why we want you to train somebody to be able to do that. But that doesn't mean that we don't have confidence in you and don't want you doing that. We want somebody to train, but on those big jobs like that, I want you in that seat, because you're the only one I have confidence in doing it. So I don't want you thinking that we didn't want you doing that. The word, what we, I guess what we were trying to say to you was, we didn't want you to feel like you had to be in that seat, and we want you training somebody, plus, like you said, if you were to get sick or whatever, you're not a kid anymore, none of us are, neither one of us are. I'm less a kid than you are, so. So we want somebody trained on that, but if the opportunity exists for you to be the one to be the operator, you are absolutely the one I want in that seat operating that piece of machinery.
To me, it wouldn't make any difference saying, we want you running the grader all the time, because we know you're excellent running the grader, but you can't run four graders. I mean, and, my whole theory behind it is, there needs to be other guys trained, just so you can't be ten places.
In order to keep them trained, they gotta be able to run.
Well, they do, I understand. But if you were available to, like I said, you're the guy wanting the seat on all those, all those things.
No, I don't think it was meant to be that.
Well, that's the way I thought it had.
No. No, and sorry, sorry if that came off that way, that you thought we didn't, because that wasn't the point. The point was, we know you have other things to do, we need to get somebody trained to do that. But for me, and I'm sure these guys too, that if you are available and there is time, you're the guy I want in those seat operating those things all the time.
And I fully understand, in this day and age, people don't wanna work, it's hard to even find somebody that shows any interest in anything. I mean, it really is.
He's had more than one that he hired, didn't even show up. Came in the next day, wanted, wanted a job.
Been too that way.
Yeah, I, I fully understand.
This isn't, we were talking before the meeting started, this isn't, all my years of sitting here, this is my most frustrating times.
I've never seen this.
I can't get people to do the job, can't get people to do what they said they would do when they took the job, but can't get materials to do the job with. It, it is the most frustrating time, and you're trying to spend someone else's money to do a good thing, and you just can't get the job done, because nobody wants to work. Yep.
Yep.
Okay, well, I wanted to make sure you understood, like, we've been friends a long time, and there is no, no point to, we say, we need to get somebody in that seat, because you're awful, you need to get out of that seat. That was never any intent. The intent was, we know you have other things to do, but if you have time, and can still train someone, but the bulk of the time, you're the guy who wants that seat, because I know you know what you're doing. You've done it for a hundred years.
Well, Cody does a good job.
Good, good, and that's good to know. And you may sometimes feel like he's doing as good as you, and you don't have to be in that seat, and that's really our hope of being, being that goal at some point.
And AJ, AJ done a good job on the chip spreader too, right? He done some toward the end.
I think too, the more versatile your employees are, the more things they can do.
Yeah.
The less stress it is on you, and less, you know, frees you, or the more it frees you up.
We talked about that before. He was stuck for a while. He had one person, I can't remember what the projects we were doing, it was putting in, covered what it was, but uh, had one person who did the great all, I think, and uh, and he, he got sick, he couldn't be there, so they had plans to put these things in, just couldn't, because then they'd be able to operate the great all. We need more than one able to run, operate the great all, so. But we only, you're short employees and stuff to get people in those spots. We understand that. We feel for you, and we appreciate that, but I was afraid that you thought we didn't appreciate you, and that's not the case at all.
No.
Not the case at all. What else you got for us?
I did think that you didn't want me to run the equipment.
No, that, no, not at all.
Well.
I wish you could do it all. One employee would be good news for us, yeah.
About filled up right there, I'll tell you.
I bet. How many employees you down?
About four.
Okay. All truck drivers?
No, parts man, shop foreman, parts man slash, um, truck drivers. And way out, truck drivers mainly. I mean, that's all we got now, either CDL or non-CDL.
Right.
There's no operators or.
Yeah, so CDL you're missing.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I did hire one, he started last Monday, I think it was.
Has the increase in pay that we got done, is that, have you seen any benefit to that? Is that attracting at least more people, whether you want them or not, or whether they work out or not? Is that attracting more people?
Well, I'd say it should have, I mean, I.
We're competitive anyway?
I would be very happy with it.
Okay.
Well, we're up closer to what everybody else is now.
Yes, that's where we need to be. We were just, we were just being ignored before, because it wasn't competitive, yeah.
If they don't stop and think of the benefits we have, and all that, I mean.
And they don't understand.
There is things other than money.
Yes, there are.
To my notion.
Okay, what else you got?
Um, I got three claims. Need an out cycle check for. One of them is Barney Carroll.
Bridge painter.
Got the bridge, bridges painted, um, seventeen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
How many bridges was that?
Oh, I don't remember, and I don't have that.
That's okay, he's curious. I know he's done several.
I don't think I've got any, that makes on that one.
That's okay, just, once it come down to about a bridge for every side bridge.
We have the list.
Around twelve fifty, thirteen fifty.
That's what I thought it was. About fifteen hundred bucks or less, yeah.
Yeah. There may be one or two of over that, but that's the majority, majority of them. And then I got one for VS Engineering. In the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars. That is on the bridge, Bridgeston, that engineering study.
Yeah.
We'd let them do. And the last one is a little bigger. It's on the second phase of the bridge inspection, eighty-five thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-four cents.
Sure. Well, speaker bridge inspection for, for make a motion, these were, are we with the Meltzer Bridge? What's happening with that? I get a call about that, so. Okay. I'll make a motion and approve three out of cycle checks. Uh, one to Barry Carroll, who's been painting covered bridges, in the amount of seventeen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. To VS Engineering, uh, in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars. And second to VS Engineering for a second part of the bridge inspection fee at eighty-five thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
All right.
Okay. I got a contract with VS Engineering.
Before you go on, are, are you comfortable with it? You, that's uh, this stuff you've been doing, okay? Good.
Yeah, I have.
Okay. It's always scary, scary to go down a new road with companies like that, so it's good to know.
They've done all right.
Okay.
Um, this is a contract for them to prepare some plans, so we can bid to Meltzer Bridge.
Okay.
Um, so everybody could.
What are they talking about doing to it? New abutments?
No, not really. Uh, sucking out under the abutment, the west abutment.
Okay.
And pouring ground or flowable fill, or whatever you wanna call it, in there, to stabilize it. And of course, you have to repair that arch ring. And uh, something else I thought.
I think down the side too, of the abutment too, did they figure, are they figuring? I mean, there's a hollow cavity behind that wall.
Yeah.
And the.
None of the.
Gotta get my bearing straight here, that's, bridge sets on kind of an angle, uh, kinda northwest down there.
Montezuma side or the other side?
The Montezuma side, but it would be, to me, it would be the southwest corner.
Are we talking about hydraulic cement, fill those voids with hydraulic cement, ten is what we're doing?
Well, the, the whole problem is, on that side, it's scoured out all the way under.
Right.
You're gonna have to drive piling, or you're going to have to shut part of that creek down, and dig out from under that and keep the water pumped. If you just pour ground in there where it's at, it's gonna wash your back out of it. So you've got it, basically, you're getting a footer out.
Okay.
But after you get that done, you're gonna have to set forms and pump ground in behind it, and on at least the south wall. Then you're gonna have to do some heavy rip wrapping. And you're, I think you're gonna have to use like a class two, three or four hundred pound rip wrap, rather than the stuff that's gonna roll out in floods.
So this contract is just to do the engineering? Do you achieve those goals?
Yes, just to do the.
So he can legally put it up for bid.
Yeah, then you're gonna bid it from there.
And how much is that?
Uh, fifteen thousand.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the contract with VS Engineering for the plans for the Meltzer Bridge. I sent this to you, and we got this.
Yeah, it's fine.
I, I did have one question for you. Does that include them actually putting it up for bid, or they do?
No, we'll bid that.
Okay, I did, I just was wondering if they was actually gonna do all the posting on that with, a lot of times they do, and I didn't know if that was included or not.
No, I don't think so, we're.
I will second Bruce's motion.
So this is what we're getting from them, or actually the drawings of what they're gonna be sending out to bid? Okay.
Yeah, everything that should need to be done.
Okay. So move a second then, to approve fifteen thousand dollar contract with VS Engineering to prepare uh, drawings and plans for bids for uh, Meltzer Bridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, okay. There you are.
Bruce.
I'm sorry. It's like just a few, Jim. The uh, community crossing grant has been turned in, the application, I think. County Road, uh, two hundred north, two seventy-five north, and twelve hundred north. Sections of those roads.
Have they, I gotta ask about this the other day too, sorry, at the time it wasn't. Um, have they got the seven twenty yet?
No, not yet.
Okay.
I haven't heard of a schedule yet.
And that's going all the way through, so, so they would know when that...
No, just going from Fallen Rock to the county line.
Yes, okay, yeah.
It's not going to fifty-nine.
Oh, it's not going to fifty-nine, oh, I was thinking it was, okay.
No, remember we drove it, and that was the worst section, see, there's other section, the, you know, it hold up for quite a while yet.
Yeah. Lee Creed had contacted me about, about passion again, if he should do that or not, obviously, again, it was going all the way through, but, but is it going to that bridge? Is that where we're going to go?
The, the bridge on there at Fallen Rock.
Oh, yeah.
Where the semis kept knocking the guardrail down, that's where it's gone.
From there on, yes, okay, good, gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay. And just so you know, I went to Taylor Reserve Mansfield, who had called and complained about Chris Kelly when he was grading the road there, dragging rock up on his...
Yeah, that's what, no.
So I went out and took care of that, I cleaned that off, and he came out, and I told him I would just ask Chris just to pick up the stuff before he gets there. Chris Kelly's been doing some dragging on the, on Mill, Mill Road there, and neighbors are happy with it, apparently, keeping it, but, there at Mansfield, across the road from the sandstone pit, he was dragging some rock up on this gentleman's dust control, and he didn't want him doing that, so I went and swept it off, cleaned it off, and then I'll talk to Chris about that. And he was nice, he came out and I was talking to him, he was nice, it is just neighbor stuff, and...
Yeah, I didn't really go ahead and be going down that far.
Yeah.
I didn't rule it that way. I had a lady call the other day, wants a speed limit on six twenty east, that's a dead end road, go south off of New Discovery.
After you turn off Bridgeston Road, how far out is it?
Almost fifty-nine.
Almost fifty-nine, okay.
Way over there.
Yeah.
Between Bicycle and fifty-nine, somewhere in that area, or is that on the other side of Bicycle?
Yeah, I'd be on the other side of Bicycle, right, you were over to Harvey used to live?
Yeah.
Okay. George Michaels.
That's okay, how far off fifty-nine, mile or less?
Less than a mile.
Okay.
Half mile, I imagine.
Is there a reason not to do it, not to give it to them?
No, I mean...
You gonna drop an ordinance in for it?
Now, that's Nick wants to know, that's probably information, but we can draw...
What do you wanna say, has, make them happy, forty-five or...
No, I'd say thirty.
Can't control it, so.
Yeah.
What speed, you want thirty?
Thirty.
What was the road again?
Six twenty east.
Six twenty east.
All the way from New Discovery to the end?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd make that motion, and we approve a, an ordinance to install a speed limit of thirty miles an hour on six twenty, south of Bridgeston Road, uh, of, of New Discovery Road to the end of that road.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Too bad. And... Do you reckon we could get the ambulances to turn their sirens on before they get to our fuel pumps, or their fuel pumps? Janie's been complaining about them, they turn them on right at our office, but I, they always used to turn them on way back there.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and I like that idea, because it gives our people, we got trucks, or some piece of machinery running there, we can probably hear that above that machinery.
Okay.
And they won't walk out across there.
Okay. So before they, before they get to you, they turn back there farther, okay.
Yeah.
Basically, as soon as they come out, get on the road.
So it comes right out of the ground.
Yeah, almost, yeah.
Think they should anyway.
Yeah, I do too.
I'll let her know, we have to take care of that.
I appreciate it. And I think that's all I have.
Oh, so you wanna get with Nick and come up with a plan of how we want to be made a hole on that, or you wanna give him some measurements of how long it is, and what we're talking about?
Yeah, I have to major.
Okay.
And I have to look at the contract too, and see what our options are on it, but generally, performance of the contracts would be better alternative, if we have that available to us.
Janie had mentioned to me, and I just mentioned to her, so I thought it was money for this material, and I had told her to ask Randy not to cash the check, not to accept anything as a settlement, because that's really something we have to do, as far as accepting a settlement. But if it's for, for a different thing, that they want us to get money back, is he, are you okay with them?
We just need to be certain that that's, there's something on paper, email, whatever, that that's what it's for, I assume there was some type of correspondence back and forth at some point.
Yeah, it was.
Okay.
We just gotta make sure it's not for this incident, because then they're gonna say, well, you already settled that, here's your check for it, so.
Yeah, I mean, as long as there's a document saying that this money's for this, then we're okay.
Which I'd be best if you and Randy get together on it.
Yeah, it'd be good to see that, I mean, just so we're on the same page.
How does that work, I mean, I know ultimately, we're responsible for accepting any settlements, any kind of contract with anybody, but if, say, somebody come up and somebody refunded, like maybe if, three, four years ago, when Waxer Road was so bad, and they had cashed that check, does that put an end to it, or can we still appeal that, and say, wait a minute, that's not up to them to decide that?
So the problem becomes, if it's been cashed, did the person that cashed the check have the authority to cash the check? In, in his particular instance, he's the head of that department, so that would be problematic.
Yeah.
It'd kinda depend on who the person was, and whether they'd be seen in a role as having the authority to do that or not.
And some judge would have to decide there, whether he's in a role or not, okay.
It's easier argument if it's the big wig of the department versus somebody else.
That's why I asked Janie to ask him not to, not to cash that, or agree to any settlement, because I, I thought it was for this, and I wasn't ready to...
So if there's some type of correspondence that says, hey, Randy, see, attach this check for whatever services provided, oil reimbursement, or something, that would be ideal.
Okay.
I haven't got the check yet.
Okay.
Going to volleyball tonight?
Hi.
Going to volleyball tonight?
Yeah, North Putnam.
North Putnam?
The young one.
You got somebody over there?
Yeah.
Oh my gosh, you're spread out then.
Ella, she's playing volleyball too.
I've got a couple of quick questions for you. Um, let me think here, it is Rosedale Road, and what's that gravel road that heads off towards, uh...
Billy Manal, or Charlie Manals?
No.
Wees Road.
I'll get it here in a second. Help me out, Kathy, what is that road?
Come on. Put that in minutes, we do that, yeah.
Where school note comes out on Rosedale Road. Turn and go east.
Oh, Smockville?
Yeah, or Smocksville, that gravel road, I can't remember the number.
Why's it called?
Smocksville.
I've never heard of that in my life.
Yeah.
Yeah, they used to be a little town.
A little minor town, I think.
Are you guys moving that stop sign, or is somebody else moving that stop sign?
I haven't put it back where it was at.
It's been moved three times.
Well, maybe it's been moved again.
Were they moving it?
Past month, there, I don't know who moved it the first time, but actually, whoever moved it is, in my mind, is where it should be.
Okay.
But Rosedale Road makes a ninety degree corner, and then around here, it turns and goes to fifty-nine. There's a gravel road that shoots off here, goes to Smocksville. The stop sign has been here, so when you're going down Rosedale Road, you stop, and then you go on down, this is all blacktop. Somebody had moved the stop sign over here, then it got moved back, it's been, I think it's four times it's been moved now, I'll have to look again today.
Well, it's been on the blacktop for a long time.
Yes, for a long time, it has, and everybody's used to it.
Yeah, that's...
So you think it should be on Smocksville rather than on the blacktop then?
Well, I mean...
Or should we have one both?
Well, just my honest opinion, I mean, what it would boil down to is if I'm going down Highway forty-one, and it makes a pretty sharp curve, place it does, first county road that shoots off, that county road, or that secondary road should be stopping, because the main blacktop, which the road does not change, because I shouldn't have the right to cross the lane of traffic.
Right.
If you shoot on the cross there, you're actually crossing the lane of traffic.
Right.
I mean, theoretically, it should be on the gravel, by theory, but it hasn't been here for years, and we haven't had a problem, but it's been moved probably four times, so somebody's moving it back and forth.
Should we put one on both, take care of that problem?
I guess we could, but well, somebody probably tear it down, there's two people around there evidently fighting over where it shouldn't be, and I can't find out who did.
There's one lady, I don't know.
I can't imagine a lady down there moving it, but...
Do you want, do you want one on, on Smockville then?
I mean, I pretty well come to stop here anyway, with corns in, because you can't see it out there.
Yeah.
So, but, I don't know, should we, would it be better put two, and that we either both be mad or both be happy.
That's right, one or the other.
I have no problem stopping both ways.
Well, is that your motion?
If you wanna, well, can't do it. Ordinance, yeah, we have to do an ordinance.
Yeah, we do, so that's your motion to put a stop sign on Smocksville?
Yeah, because a lot of times, see, people's flying down through here, and since they know they don't have to stop, they shoot on the cross, so it really wouldn't hurt for somebody to continue stopping at the... But legally, I would think you would have...
Smockville, and what's the other road?
It's Smocksville, it's Rosedale Road.
Five fifty east and five Runnersdale Road.
Fifty east and Rosedale.
And yeah, so is my motion just to put two there, and...
And I'm second to, move a second, but a stop sign on five fifty east and Rosedale Road, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
You may, when you send the sign guy down there to, to take a hammer with him, and damage your threads on the bolts, so they can't keep moving, we're taking them down.
What's that anti, uh...
A lock tight?
Lock tighter.
They, they still get them off, yeah.
Take a portable welder, weld along, it's about, it's...
Right, grinder can take care of it, you do what you want, a grinder can take care of it.
Maybe just run over the stop sign.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably what I have today.
Uh, the other thing I've got, I have one more quick thing, and I'll let you go, I don't, it's not a problem, I mean, it is a bit, but I don't think we want the liability. I was leaving Rockville two or three weeks ago, you know where Dogwood Valley is, down there?
Oh, yeah.
Go past, go past where New Discovery and Bridgeston, go past there, there's that little culvert, and then there's that hill. Your guy mowing, there was a car in front of me, and there was me, and he stopped the mower right there at the bottom of that hill, and he motions...
Oh, yeah, that's...
Motions for both of us to go around, well, the front car went around, and two cars popped over that hill, and I got hit head on. I went ahead and stayed there, and he kept motioning, I sat there five, six minutes, he kept motioning for me to go around. I went down by there later, I stood up on top of my truck, and from where he was standing, he could not have seen traffic over there, and he kept looking at me like, come on, Stu, come around, get motioned. I ain't gonna do it, I kept motioning for him, so, but I don't think, I guess I, what you should do maybe is say something to him, and say, you're better off not to motion somebody around, you cause a head on, and the liability's on them.
That's why Danny Church is gonna tell you, don't, don't tell him anything.
Yeah, I just let it go, and when he's ready to pull over, he pulls over if they wanna go around, but, he wasn't very happy with me, because I wouldn't go around there.
He's got short temper.
Yeah, and I figured that, but...
Okay, well, you'll give Nick on what we need to do, and remember you had to make that good, and like I said, I don't wanna beat anybody up, but we need to have them responsible, so other people know we're gonna make people be responsible too. I don't wanna beat anybody up, but I want what we paid for.
I already told him he's not coming back.
That's what she said, you told him that, yeah.
Is it, is it just the mix he sold us for the...
Yeah, the oil, oil mixture. It's supposed to be thirteen and a half ton per, or thirteen and a half gallon per ton of oil in a ton of rock. And they took samples of the rocks and everything after our incident down there to start with, and come back, well, the material looked all right, you know, but you can't really tell just by looking. So wound up, and, because we went over, a little over on our tonnage up there anyhow, but, um, I figured it up, and he's got about four and a half gallon more per ton in it than...
More.
Than it should have had.
Yeah.
So...
Thirty percent more.
I was gonna say, that's almost thirty, forty percent.
So he was actually selling it to you by the gallon, by the ton?
Yeah. But we don't have any way of weighing the big pile.
Right.
When we're hitting the mix, you know.
Yeah.
And then we run through the pub, and we don't have no way to weigh it then, um, we have to wait till we're done, it's carried out, we use it, and we'll tell how much we had.
Yeah.
You're just done.
So you can't catch, you can't, you can't catch it until after.
Yeah, did we meter this in there, or did they?
They metered it in, I mean, as far as much as you can meter it, said he had it set at about thirteen and a half, but it's come out more than that, because we wound up less tonnage, so...
Yeah.
We had the same issue last time, because they, and they knew they had put the wrong amount of oil, and it's supposed to have been corrected, and it wasn't. But then the complication was, the guy, the salesman was on vacation, he felt bad about that, but he was just calling and counting on them to do it right, and it wasn't done right, and there you are.
Remember that with Waxer.
Yeah, that was awful. So you're gonna have to do that all summer, until they, unless they come back and replace you, you're gonna stand it all summer, the rest of the summer anyway, until it gets hot?
Yeah, but maybe if we put that CA sixteen's on there, and roll it in, maybe that might take care of it.
Alrighty, we appreciate you.
Alrighty, you guys have a good evening.
You too, Randy.
How old's the youngest one? How old's the youngest one, granddaughter?
You wouldn't ask that.
What grade is he?
Thirteen, thirteen.
Freshman?
No, eight.
Oh, so it's junior high, oh, okay, well, you got a long way to go yet, you get a lot of beat, bleacher setting yet then. So our last one.
Did you start to say something? Excuse me, the Union Hospital contract cost all three of you to sign it, so, um, but it's okay to sign, we now know the answer to the question, it's gonna go through out of whatever the rate is, you're gonna pay your benefits and stuff out of it, so it's okay to sign.
All right.
Okay.
And we need, need a mo, a motion to approve it, and then we'll fire it.
Right.
So I make a motion, we approve the contract with Sheriff's Department and Union Hospital Clinton to allow the deputies to work over there for me and Kelly.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go ahead and sign it.
Warren, do you have the original?
Yes, I do.
This is a copy, but if you've got the original, you can...
When I ran next door just now to turn the camera on over there, Liddy said something about asking if you guys had appointed anyone to the health board.
No, we have not, we haven't had any recommendations from them that I know of.
That's where it's left at, that they were gonna make a recommendation.
A gal that came in, I can't remember her name, it's...
Stephanie Oles?
Yeah, yeah, she was gonna get back with us, have a list for us, yeah.
Statute says they get, they can give us a list of up to five, I don't know if they have to have five, but five, and that's where we had to go through that process, again, D's and R's, over there, D and R, and...
But then, what, what we run into before is if you couldn't find the D and make a, make a reasonable acronym.
Yes, yes.
Yep. Lot of smaller counties, it's, you run into that, or a lot of counties where it's either strongly Republican, strongly Democrat, you run into that.
Which I could see, and any mortgage, you might wanna do anything.
Right, also.
Do you have anything for us today?
Um, really, I was just gonna go through some skilled building for Hamilton Center.
Okay.
That way you guys kinda have an understanding of what that is, from our care managers.
Come on up, tell us what you got.
All right.
Can I rent a the town?
Make it real quick and fast, and I know you guys wanna injure it, so, usually if we have a consumer that comes in, they go through the assessment process, um, and then they're referred, yeah.
Kathy came to your office before you left.
I didn't get to talk to her though, she was in there though.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, you're good, so, and then if they're referred to services, so skills, case management, right, that's when they get set with one of our case managers. So skills primarily is what it sounds like, you're developing new skills, or you're reinforcing skills that are already there. Grief, loss, budgeting, cooking, um, primary care, medication, we look at everything from school behaviors, all the way through to, you know, self-esteem for adults. So we cover a lot of those, those are all usually individualized services, sometimes we work on social skills, sometimes we work on coping skills, but it's all new skills dependent upon what the person feels like they need to work on, and what's being recommended, usually within that first initial assessment therapy. We also, if they're going through therapy services, will not necessarily, um, will combine those services, right? So they'll see a therapist, then they'll see a care manager, they'll work on specific strategies and therapy, and then they come out to a care manager who reinforces those strategies and ensures those strategies are being used, okay? Now, case management is a little bit different, it's usually what happens on behalf of the consumer, so if they need help with coordinating, finding a new primary care physician, finding a new specialist, getting connected to Medicaid, getting connected to Medicare, uh, filling out that social security paperwork, um, those kinds of things, that's specifically more geared towards case management. They're really in tune with our county's resources, so food pantries, churches, shelters, anything like that, that may assist a consumer in living their best life, right?
She, she's come, because I asked, we really don't know what Hamilton Center does... She, she's come, because I asked, we really don't know what Hamilton Center does for us, what we pay for, and I get asked a lot of times, what do we get, what do we, you know? I don't, I don't know.
Absolutely.
And you need to know, so I appreciate it.
No, absolutely, and I know I'm talking fast today, and Stacy usually presents to you guys.
And feel free to come back anytime, but let's say that I knew that, that Dan had a problem. Sam was some young guy, and I knew he had a problem.
Absolutely.
But he wouldn't go talk to you. How do I refer him to you, if, if I referred him to you, or I went to you and said, there's this guy, would you, would you make that contact?
We would absolutely make that contact, absolutely, you know, if you came to me and said, hey Mandy, you know I have this guy, you know, we've known each other a long time, but I know he's got some stuff going on, he may really need the help, but may not know to come to you. What I can do is get his phone number, get his address, if you're willing to give me that, and then reach out and say, hey Dan, my name's Mandy, I'm with the Hamilton Center, how are you doing today? Um, you know, here are some services that you may be interested in, um, you know, would you like to come and set up an appointment? Would you, we try to make that initial contact, um, very benign.
If he didn't wanna come in and talk to you, do you ever go, go there?
Sometimes we do.
Okay.
Yep, sometimes we do, we, it really depended upon the person in the situation. We had recently a death of a family member and got a phone call, and they were like, you know, my sister really needs some help, um, just really need somebody to talk to. We were able to send a care manager out and really say, hey, here's what we can offer you, here's some services. We think it might be beneficial, and if you're not ready now, that's fine, but think about us in a month, or even.
How would that person pay for those services, how does that work?
So really, we accept anybody regardless of insurance, so you can have private insurance, um, you can have Medicaid, you can have Medicare. Um, we really try to utilize Medicaid as much as possible, and what we get is a, what we call a Medicaid package through MRO reimbursable services, Medicaid rehabilitation option. So when, let's say Dan comes in, we'll meet with him initially, kind of get some backstory, figure out what's going on, then we'll do what's called an adults' needs and strengths assessment. What that gives us is a level of need, uh, we submit that level of need to the state, and the state says, based on this score, you get this amount of services for the next six months. So use this wisely, you get skills, case management, therapy, um, psychoeducation, you get, um, we have what's called our clubhouse, and so they get a percentage, like when they go to spend a day at the clubhouse, the clubhouse bills like a day service.
If you found that he had some health issues, not mental health, but health issues, how do you deal with those?
So we actually have, um, our FQHC through Grace Clinic, and they're doing physical and primary healthcare. We also have a Grace Clinic starting out of our Putnam office, which is a little bit closer to our park office. Uh, we have our nurse practitioner who is going there, so we will get our people set up there if they don't have a primary care physician. Now, if they come to us and they have a primary care physician, that's fine, if they wanna stay with their primary care, that's fine. But they may say, you know, I'm really having some heart issues, I need to get help with, you know, finding a cardiologist. So we can go into that primary care physician and talk with their doctor on their behalf, and with that person, and say, you know what? This is what they're reporting, have we considered a specialist, have we considered, you know, here are some names, let's get them connected with where they need to be.
Let's say that Dan now is not that kid anymore, now Dan's just a little old guy, little man.
Absolutely.
Getting harder for me to say little old man all the time, but, so Dan's just a little old guy, living by himself, and I know he's dirty, and I know he's not eating very well.
Yep.
You can help someone like that?
Absolutely, that's our primary role, absolutely.
So I should just come and give you the name and address, and you can make the connection there?
Yeah, we can absolutely.
See, we don't know that those things are even available.
Yep, we can absolutely advocate, now, what I will tell you is it's based off of autonomous choice. So we may contact Dan, and Dan may say, you know what, I am fine, I don't want services.
Probably would, so what do you do then?
And then what we do is kinda keep an eye on, right? So, hi Dan, I'm Mandy, you know, I tried to build that relationship, um, and then over time, try and get him in to come do those services. We really try to kind of start off benignly, because sometimes, you know, people have a stigma about mental health, right? Or they have a stigma about, I don't want people in my house, you know, I know what it's like to have some stranger come knock on my door. I know, you know, other people in the county are probably like, oh.
Is there any kind of a service that's more aggressive, that if Dan refuses those types of services, that they can really step in and say, Dan, you need to go do this?
So what we can do, and what is often out there, is if, like, let's say you are very concerned, and Dan is on his own, um, you can have a well check done, um, by the police, and they can go out. If at that point, they determine that Dan is at a risk for, you know, suicidal, homicidal.
Well check, with checks either still alive or not removed.
No, they can actually ID, um, a consumer, or, you know, Dan, in this case. They could actually say, you know what, we're very fearful, uh, we have enough, we're gonna take you to the hospital, we're gonna have you assessed at the hospital.
And he refuses that?
He cannot.
Wow.
Okay, let me ask you this, what if he actually has family, you can still do that even though he may have children, or?
Mm-hmm, yeah, absolutely, so if there's a danger, if the police see, usually what we're looking for is suicide, yeah. What we consider gravely disabled, so are you putting yourself or your family members in grave risk or in grave harm to really warrant an assessment at a hospital or at our center? Um, and that's absolutely an option, and in fact, we had a crisis that came in today. Our option is we don't ID, that's usually more for the police or the Sheriff's Department. Now, we will do an emergency detention, so if we, let's say, Dan comes into our center, we've assessed him, and he's like, mm, now that I'm here, I, I just really don't think this is a good idea. I just, I don't wanna be hospitalized, but we found enough in our assessment, and he's told us enough in our assessment, that we're very concerned about sending him home, we can emergency detention, we fill out paperwork, it goes through our access center, then signed off by the judge, and we can have him held for seventy-two hours in a hospital if needed.
Wow.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I don't wanna take all your time.
No, no.
I like you to come back regularly, don't feel like you have to make an appointment or get on your agenda, because things change for you too, but.
Absolutely.
Enlightening to me, I didn't know these even existed things.
Yeah.
But just for the record, I'll find Jim's where he's at.
Mine's mental.
Listen, I think we all need a little help, and it's definitely the Monday is Tuesday ever, so I think if you're all in the same boat, that I am, it's been a little hectic today.
Well, I think it's enlightening, I had no idea about how those things work, we can ask.
And there is so many people, Alzheimer's anymore that.
Oh, my goodness, absolutely.
It runs pretty high in my family, in fact, I told my kids, I said, something happens to me, take my phone, give me a stick, tell me go take care of the cows. I wonder around the pasture.
Kathy does that all the time to me.
And it's amazing, we have several consumers with that diagnosis, and we're working on getting them into long-term care, working with their family, and those kinds of things. Because oftentimes, right, is that they're living alone, or they, they're not seeing family regularly.
They may not even know.
Right, and they don't know that's going on, and in fact, one of my care managers took one of her consumers down the other day, and they, the doctor said, you know, we may actually have to look at long-term care and you not going home. Um, and so that was a new experience for all of us, you know, that was something that I didn't know the doctors could do from their end, and I had been doing this for twenty-plus years, so, um, that's the first time I've seen that, and it's the first time that I've had a doctor that's like, absolutely, we can do that. You know, we'll watch her progression over the course of the next two months and see where we're at, but we'll probably look at that, and I thought, oh.
Well, I appreciate your coming, this is, this is good stuff.
Absolutely.
Let's do this more often, because really.
Absolutely.
You're, you're new to us at this, but us too, we have paid for Hamilton Center for years, and we have tried. Initially, the relationships, you know, the first couple of times with new people coming in are, are good, but that's last we see of them, and then they're just gone, never see them again.
Absolutely.
We may have questions, I don't even know who to ask or anything, so this is a great stuff.
So my name is Mandy, and I'm the program manager for Park and Vermillion County. Stacy, you guys, I think, know very well, and she was the previous program manager, she has not left, she's just my director now. So she is still within the county, she still comes, so we will definitely, for me, it's just an open conversation. Let's tell, let's talk about, you know, situations, what can we do? The good thing in that, I will tell you before I leave, is that we're fully staffed with care managers currently. Um, we have two telehealth therapists on, um, one is three hours away, one is four hours, but they are doing therapy via telehealth. I've got a clinical supervisor on site, Monday, Tuesday, and Fridays, and then I also have an intern therapist that we're hoping to keep on board as soon as we groom her. So our, our office right now is full, we're fully staffed, so we are really out there.
So I'm having a tough day, and I'm thinking, my, this is it, I'm done, and I call you, what happens, what happens, I call you, what happens?
So we'll do a number of things, right, so we'll kind of talk you through, how's your day, how are you feeling today? Do we need to look at a crisis assessment today? Let's say you're saying, no, I'm just feeling really down. So then what we'll do is we'll set up an appointment, get you in for an initial assessment, kind of figure out, you know, is this just a one-time thing? Are we feeling this way more frequently, has something in your life transpired where you may be feeling down?
What if you do a sense that I may be wanting to do something now, tonight, what do you do then?
So then what we're gonna do is we're gonna try and get you in for, again, a crisis assessment, let's say, um.
Can you send the police to pick me up if you think it's that bad?
I can, absolutely, absolutely, in fact, we had a situation like that, um, when was that, last week or so? That we ended up calling again for a well check and said, hey, if they're willing, bring them to our office, we'll assess them right here. And they said, great, fantastic, sure enough, they brought them in, and here we are, so, yep, absolutely, yes, so.
As far as I knew, too, you shared this today.
Yeah.
We're getting nothing for what we're paying for, and I don't care about that so much, I just don't know what services you're doing for people, and this is good to know.
Yeah.
So it's not that I'm just wanting to check on you, I gotta make sure we're getting our money to work, I don't know if we're getting our money to work now.
Exactly, and you know, part of this is too, you guys don't know, right? Because part of our job is to kind of blend in into the community, so you're, you know, me, you're gonna see me wearing my badge, my care managers, who's gonna be out there with Dan, who may need to go to the food pantry. You may not realize it's a care manager and a consumer, right, they're blending in, they're trying to guide Dan through, you know, okay, well, maybe this is your first time in a food pantry, this is how this is gonna work, and look, you can utilize this once a month, or maybe twice a week, or, you know, how often. And they're gonna teach Dan those skills on how to utilize that. Then they're also, on the flip side of that, gonna work on those budgeting skills and food stance, right? To get them connected so that Dan's not just solely utilizing the food pantry, right? We're gonna bring in that whole host of, yeah.
Well, come back often and talk to us.
Absolutely.
And I talked to Stacy before sometime, and I know.
Yeah.
It's even more vague in your field than it probably any other, but I, I'd like to sometime have a conversation about what constitutes a win or a loss, and how, how that works out. Because you have to have wins in your life to, to keep doing what you do, but how do you, how do you determine that you've had a win in this situation?
Baby steps.
So, yeah, so let's have that conversation sometime, I'd like to know that.
Absolutely, sounds good, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You guys have anything? No? Motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned.